Well, at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order if Shad can lead us in prayer.
It's all prayer. Father, we're thankful again for another opportunity to be able to call upon your name, Lord. We're thankful for all the many blessings that you've given us, Lord, and every one of those that we take for granted every day. We're thankful for that. And, Lord, we're sitting here thanking, we stand amazed in your presence and understanding and knowing that you know each and every one of us down to an individual, Lord, you know exactly what we stand in need of. Father, I pray for everyone that's bowed here with us, that you would be with them and touch them in a special way, Lord, the way that you know that they need you. Lord, now as we go into this meeting to conduct business for the City of Coming, what we pray for is that you grant wisdom, we pray that you would grant knowledge, Lord, that we might be able to take business or take care of business tonight, Lord, in such a manner that it will benefits the members of the City of Coming. Lord, I thank you, God, again for all of your blessings. Lead, God, direct us in all these things we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Join me in pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna just whack up next time. Yeah, I guess so. I'm afraid to touch that.
Kevin, on, I need to add the concession agreement for the ice rink.
Okay.
Is it fine to put that under fairgrounds?
Uh, yes, sir.
Item A.
Do you have a review when I send you over that thing?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, one addition to the agenda will be under new business, item E, fairgrounds, skating rink concession agreement. And those are the only changes to the agenda. I'll have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Louis Ledbetter absent. Item five, adopting the following meeting minutes from the regular council meeting of August 21st, 2018.
Motion.
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Item six, acknowledgements, there are none. Item seven, old business planning and zoning conditional use permit, 2018, 257, Brave Acres LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, if you recall, it's your meeting last month of 21st, this item was before you. You'd asked at that time that the applicant provide some additional information specifically on entrance landscaping plan. The information is contained in your packet. Our staff has reviewed the plan and the items that are proposed to be added and prefer that the plan will be satisfactory. Basically, what the applicant's proposal is doing a landscaping entrance similar to the one at the end of the Vannett Drive, which they've operated for several years. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. Mr. and Mrs. Rains are here again this evening. If you might have any specific questions of them. Of course, this is not a public hearing, but just additional information. It was requested by council at the last meeting.
Is there any discussion?
Scott, I see some potential conditions. Are those not something we want to add or announce there weren't in?
I'm not sure if I received those or not.
You responded to me.
Is it? I guess I received. Well, I mean, we, basically what we, what you'd asked at that time was that we do substantial landscaping and a privacy fence as opposed to a screened chain link fence is what they've agreed to do. And, of course, they'll have it gated electronically and signed also. And the other conditions that were in there would also apply. But is there something specific that the council wants that you wanted to add to what's here now?
I don't find the exact ones. One of them is about not having junk vehicles. Make sure boats, RDs, and cars were registered or plated, not to have motors sitting out, things that wouldn't, things that weren't junk just sitting out everywhere. It'd have to be vehicles in slips as opposed to just stuff sitting around. Not that I'm saying they would, but protect the property against potential buyers after you know.
And we can certainly add that as a, we can certainly add that as a condition to be sure that all vehicles stored there are registered and, as you say, operational.
One concern I have is on the, it's got a wood fence on the front, but then as you're pulling in that angle on the right-hand side, as you're coming up Buford Dam, and that's a chain link fence, you're gonna be looking right at it. I would consider that to be part of the front.
Yes, Scott, you said.
From the visual.
So how far down, you're saying as you're coming up Buford Dam from which direction?
If you're coming into town on the right, yeah.
Okay.
See the angle? You got a short section of wood fence, then you've got that right-hand angle.
Mm-hmm.
Back to just past where the billboard is.
You put green strips through the chain link.
So you're saying you'd want that?
Well.
Want to speak to that, Bill?
Yes, sir. I did that in a hurry last week. I understand what you're saying exactly. And we'd planned on doing that, but as you come up Buford Dam Road and cross that now, there's so much cut suit food there, you can't really see what's back there anyway.
Right.
And we weren't gonna cut that cut suit bank down just simply because it would look like such a big gully sitting up there and a part of the lesser factor. But I do plan to run that fence far enough back where it will not come in. But our experience on the chain link fence versus wooden fence is the chain link is really more secure. It's just aesthetically not as pretty. So we were gonna overlap them for security, but I do intend to have the wood all the way down so you don't see it as you come over the bridge on 400. I didn't know exactly where that point was gonna end there.
Right.
And I'm not sure my angles are exactly right. There's so much cut suit.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for it to die down, and I don't want to get staked into it through there.
I wouldn't either. Can we, can we condition it somehow that if whatever he puts up, and then we say, well, no, that's not gonna, you're gonna need a little more, you know?
I have to get a permit in order before I can build a painting. As far as I got, it's still a bit of a draw and sue, planning and zoning.
What if you, Mr. Mayor, I want to make an offer, or I don't know if this, I don't know which way is north and which way is south, but if we reference that particular fence line that you're talking about right here, and we simply say that Brave Acres will install a wood fence sufficiently far enough so as to screen the property from Buford Dam Road, the link of the fence to be approved by the zoning administrator?
Now, I'm not trying to make you put a wood fence up somewhere. It's not gonna do any good.
Right.
It's just, if aesthetically.
We have that problem now where we're at Vannett Road, just when it gets into the corners and either side, we find a tendency to go in there and it's not hard to separate the wood fence. So they can pull that through and just walk through there. So it's a weekly inspection we have of all the corners. So we're addressing that. This kind of, we don't want it to be really secure. So that's, it's all for me to pass at least at Vannett. We have a city post section there, so there's a lot of traffic from the city there as well.
I like why some snips will get a chain link fence too. They won't in, they're gonna get in.
Anybody get in, we'll hold it.
I agree, and I agree with what you said about the wind screens, but I think the slats in areas, the slats sliding between.
The slot that go vertical.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those might look nice and keep the visibility.
Well, I looked at them a couple of years ago. The problem I had is they're moist with plastic or either aluminum, and they fade quickly or they break. And then it really, then you try to replace them, and you've got sun fade in them, and it really ends up four, five years down the road not looking very attractive. At least the wood fence is consistent.
All right, Scott, you emailed me back on August 23rd.
I believe it. I already made a note here. We can add that condition.
Here's the two I wanted to add. The storage of unregistered vehicles or unregistered boats, junk vehicles, and construction equipment is prohibited. An unauthorized vehicle or boat shall be stored anywhere on site except for in their least storage slip. And outside storage of personal property, trash, junk, or any items other than the permitted boats and vehicles is prohibited.
So that's three additional conditions.
Well, the first one I wrote is one.
Okay.
And then the second one.
Can you clarify for me, if you're dealing with construction equipment, are you talking about like a landscape company? That's one of those wire stuffs and loads in the back?
I guess I was thinking more along the lines of somebody dropping their eighteen wheeler trailer back there.
Okay. We forbid eighteen wheeler, probably terrible.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Maybe if you guys could work in what kind of thing you do for a bit. I mean, I just, what I don't mind, vehicles or even construction, like a bobcat or something, but something that's not working properly or not mobile or not mobile.
It's in our current lease agreements now, and we just put it in, so I don't think it ever coming out.
I believe it. I think you guys are gonna do a great job. But once this cup is entitled, you can sell it to somebody that might not do such a good job.
I can send that section of my agreement over if y'all wanna put it in.
And that might be something that would be a great idea to do.
If you could send that.
Because that keeps it protected for the next.
All those have to be registered, so Forsyth County can get it. They have the law of tax every year, whatever it's on. And then all vehicles have to be licensed and insured when you enter.
And that's what these, that condition was trying to capture too.
Thank you.
And then I think we covered it on the visibility, but my other suggestion would just visibility, the stored items from the right away should be limited during the use of landscaping and fencing. But I think we covered that. So, thank you.
Y'all found what the landscaping is proposed or want crepe myrtles?
I like, I just, I'm thinking it's visibility from right away. As long as you can limit that, whatever they want to do.
If you went with leland's or something, then that creates more of a screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, are these leland's here going with this?
No, this is saying that, it's not saying that's what they're doing.
Okay.
I would.
I mean, we're open, you know, maybe I'll put enough crepe myrtles that there would be, you know, even the space like that, every four feet, you know, and give them ones that grow up because they flower a lot. They look good most of the year. So that's the reason.
We're calling six.
We've been, okay, six foot, yeah. So they'll recover most of the problems against it. But we're not gonna buy little ones. We're gonna buy medium size when we get them ready to grow. But, yeah, that's why we said crepe myrtles.
And they'd be pretty when they grow.
And they're pretty.
But they look a hundred and thirty.
But, I mean, if y'all want trees, we don't have a problem doing that either, whatever.
I guess the other, when everything's green out, they're green. But then in the wintertime, when all the leaves are falling off all the other trees, and they're falling off the crepes too. I mean, they're, they're bare, they're bare in the wintertime.
Something like evergreen or leland or cryptid variety or some type of that, just green like that.
Because even though you got an eight-foot fence, you could have a boat in there that's fifteen-foot high sitting on a trailer.
RVs.
That, and if you go with a hedge of leland's across that whole front and down that right side, then that, that would eventually cover all that. You wouldn't see anything but the entrance.
You got all that.
We were not, we were planning, so that's fine.
No, we're not, we're.
I think, I think it's just more about visibility.
It is about visibility. We want it to look good too.
Well, it also helps with security too. I mean, you don't see, attract people out of by, so, you know, outside of mine.
The only thing we didn't want to do is we had big old trees that are gonna plow over, and then all those trees fall on the RVs and stuff. People won't want that either. So we gotta come up with a happy medium.
Mr. Crepe's not gonna, I mean, a, a leland would be.
Wouldn't be at the base.
I'm not quite sure how to make a question about.
Kevin, we're out with it.
I think the question is, I mean, I think I have enough to craft the condition based upon what's been discussed here tonight along the lines of what you've been discussing. My question is, do you want to see them before you vote on them? If you want to see them before you vote on them, then you can do it at your next meeting or we can go forward and do it tonight based upon.
Well, so you got trees.
The wood, just the permits for the fence. And then the conditions that.
Evergreen.
The tree, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, sorry. That's what I'm saying, the trees. Those are the evergreens.
So on the.
I mean, I'm fine. I think Kevin and Scott can craft the intention tonight to just will a motion do that pretty good enough if they forward with the process, but also allow them to touch up the deal.
Yes, I think, I think that it will. And if you want us to, we can work with them on the language of it as well, so that it's in contention. But I don't think there'll be a problem with that. That's from what they said tonight.
So we need basically a motion to approve or deny which condition?
With the conditions that stated in the, in the planning commission, I think commission for, or the planning, planning department for as well as those conditions that's how it's discussed here at the meeting.
I'll make it, are we ready? Everybody else?
Oh, I, of course. How many slips you guys gonna have?
You know, Bill, I have an exact number here. I bring this to you around seventy-five to eighty, if you can, but until I, until I get the cut suit out of there, I really need to change, you know, fifteen percent.
Well, there's a lot of cut suit, can you refresh?
Yeah, I can.
You got any other?
Clear view within two thousand and five?
No.
I think it brings us good.
I think we're good.
So, trees, fence, Christopher's condition.
Yes.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditions that we had met with conditions that stated and that had been discussed tonight.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh.
Thank you.
Next is new business, item A, administration, temporary construction easement for Forsyth County.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Forsyth County has reached out to us needing some cooperation on our behalf to go forward with the Big Creek Greenway Phase Five extension. And there's a drawing in your packet that shows exactly where this is at. But anyway, they need, they need a temporary construction easement, and they also need a, they need a little bit of right-of-way from us. The amount of right-of-way is twenty-seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet. That equates to point zero six three seven acres. And that was also indicated on the drawings. The, the temporary construction easement is in green. The right-of-way is in yellow. And they need to do this to go forward with Phase Five of the Greenway Extension.
Where, where is this?
This is on Highway, where you're coming around the map, you know where.
I thought the water tanks.
Where the water tanks are, where the concrete place is. What's the name of that?
Blunt Construction.
Blunt Construction, yeah, thank you. It's right next to them. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will mention that this temporary construction easement is actually not the final draft. The final draft contains several protections for the city and its utilities that have been added in, including things such as the county has now certified that upon the completion of their improvements, that the city's access will not be affected to its water tanks. It also included a guarantee that they will not damage or impair any of our infrastructure, whether it's electrical, the water lines, or the tanks themselves. And if they do impair any of those, that they have to repair immediately at their cost expense. So.
So it's going up to Highway 20 and stop?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'll call aside, because right there, Highway 20.
Is that, is that, is that a pole sign?
That's essentially what that is.
Where you can turn around and go by.
Turn around, that's it.
Until they build a bridge, bridge across 20.
That's because the concern I had is when they're 20, there's like, looks like there's already two driveways there. It seems like we would want to figure out a way to.
One is, one of them is, well, of course, down in the green part, we have a drive there, and then just to the south of that green area is where Blount's drive is, go back to their construction.
And this is not gonna mess up either one of those?
I don't know about Blount. It won't mess up Blount, because they're not getting anything from Blount, Blount's south of us. But they've given us written, they're giving us written, written guarantees that theirs will, that theirs will not affect ours.
Well, I just feel like it needs, for safety, kind of showing around.
Yes, as far as they got permission.
I think the eventual plan is to go over Highway 20 and connect it to Sunny Mountain, uh, Sunny Mountain Park.
There'll be a lot of rock there.
Well, maybe they don't. I think under it, though.
So we don't need to approve what's in this? Do we need to approve your version?
Yeah, this is the version that you have, the one that you sent me. It's the loose one.
Oh, is it a loose one?
Yeah. I didn't give you a loose one. I'm sorry.
Why are they on the mountain?
Well, I don't know. But all of them, all of the members of council have, this is the one we sent me today.
Okay, the loose copy is the copy that has been added. I don't have a first copy, so, there you go.
I thought you'd bring it on.
So it's just a loose copy for the temporary construction, the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
I don't see any problem giving them the easement for whatsoever.
Well, part of it's, it's not, it's not temporary.
The green is temporary.
The yellow is for the highway.
Any other discussion? No motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that's a temporary construction easement? Is that what we're doing here? Yeah, the temporary construction easement for Forsyth County.
Well, and we're also giving them land.
And the right-of-way.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Next is item B, planning and zoning, business license revocation hearing for Rosie Enterprise Inc.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the public hearing for Rosie Enterprise Inc. I'm just gonna tell you briefly where we are, how we got here, for the purpose of having this meeting as part of our minutes. The City of Coming received reports going back to May 10th, 2018, where it was being told that several different individuals were reporting to the City of Coming Police Department that an establishment in the City of Coming was selling nicotine baker products to juveniles, people under the age of eighteen years to date. Of course, that's prohibited by state law. This was all, by the way, prior to our bait shop ordinance. The City of Coming based, Police Department based upon that, set up an operation where it did an undercover buy using one of the juveniles. That juvenile was searched before he did the buy. He was in, and he had no contraband on him. He was then given two twenty-dollar bills. He went into the establishment. He was able to purchase while he was in the establishment, while he was under the age of eighteen years, an alternative nicotine product. He came back out. He had a lot of amount of change. He had the nicotine product. The police officers that went into the shop where the nicotine product was purchased and by serial number were able to identify one of the twenty-dollar bills they gave the juvenile in the cash register of the, of this particular bait shop in the City of Coming. As I mentioned earlier, this was one of multiple complaints the police department had received about this particular shop. That individual's name was Mohammed Siddique. Mohammed Siddique then on, what name was this? Then on July 6th, 2018, pled guilty in city court for selling and or bottering to a minor alternative nicotine product. After that, the City of Coming based upon the guilty plea by the employee of the establishment plus the multiple complaints the City of Coming had received regarding this particular establishment issued an intent letter to revoke business license on August 2nd. The applicant or the business license holder, Samira B. Rosie or Rosie Enterprise Inc., responded on August 13th, seeking an appeal hearing. On August 15th, the City of Coming set tonight as the date for the appeal hearing, being September 4th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Gallery being the second floor of City Hall. I went into that much detail about the appeal hearing, but I do not see, I do not see the owner of the business here tonight. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate for you to ask if anybody is here representing the owner of the business as well. But I don't see the owner of the business here tonight. With that, I think it would be appropriate at this time to see if there's anybody here to speak on, on the business owner's behalf.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the business owner?
It's not, it's not here. It's an appeal hearing.
No one's here to speak on their behalf.
Mr. Mayor, based upon your ordinance, you would be justified, given everything I've just described to you of revoking the business license for this establishment. Section 1454 of the business license ordinance says that each business registration is subject to suspension or revocation for violation of any current, future rule or regulation of this code, state or federal law, specifically the, the parts that would apply to this situation would be G, the establishment is a threat or nuisance to public health, safety, or welfare, or H, there's any other violation of this code, state, or federal law, based upon the repeated complaints about this particular location, the confirmed sale to an underage minor, and the guilty plea thereafter. If the council so desires to revoke the business license of this establishment, it would be authorized under its ordinance to do so. I do have, for the purposes, I'm gonna give this to the clerk, for the purposes of keeping the record for this hearing, certified copies of all the materials related to the police department's involvement, the guilty plea, the waiver of rights information, as well as a certified copy of the police report. If you want it, if you do, if you want it, we actually have the video queued up where this particular individual was interviewed and admitted to selling these products to minors as well. It's up to you guys if you want to see it.
Any discussion?
Chief, add anything, or is that pretty much it?
That's pretty much it.
To nominate a motion to revoke.
A motion to deny the appeal.
Okay.
The license was revoked, and then the appeal there, and so a motion to deny the appeal. That's what the council decided to do.
Make a motion to deny the appeal for Rosie Enterprise Inc.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Next is item C, IT, additional cybersecurity protection.
Mayor, members of the city council, about three weeks ago, the City of Coming got hit by a pretty nasty virus. So we, as a result of that virus, I'm happy to say we're able to recover everything, everything was rebuilt nicely. So we, we got out pretty good. But as a result of that, it kind of forced us to look at our cybersecurity measures and our virus protection. And we determined, after we recovered from the virus, to prevent that from happening again, that we needed to get something better than what we had. So after talking with several other IT professionals and other companies, we went with a reference to. So I've talked with several, uh, other IT professionals and other companies. Uh, we went with a recommendation of Serene IT to go with a company or go with a, uh, product called Cyber Protect and optics for important detection. Uh, Serene IT, it probably sounds familiar to you because that's the company that's also going to do our server virtualization. Uh, they said this would work well with what we're doing. And I did see a demo of it. I looked at it. I did lots of research on it, and it is a great product. So in your packet, you've got a quote for, uh, for what we looked at. So really, the business end of that quote is gonna be on page three. Uh, and, and how this works is there's gonna be a charge per device. And we'll call it device because it covers servers and workstations. Uh, we got a total of a hundred and twenty-two servers and workstations. Uh, so it's gonna be right around, it's eleven sixty-seven per, uh, machine per month to maintain that product. And there's an upfront cost of forty-five hundred dollars, uh, to deploy that. So, uh, Serene IT will actually come on site, help us to deploy that, and, uh, train us on how to use it. It's a very good product. Product that banks use. So like I said, did a lot of research on it. It's a very good product. And, and we did this, and we had to do it basically as a kind of emergency situation to make sure that we didn't have any more infection moving forward. So, uh, I don't know if there needs to be any action or anything on that deal. Or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So the recurring is monthly, fourteen hundred a month?
That's right. Fourteen hundred twenty-three seventy-four a month.
This was not budgeted for, so it will require council to approve this.
Have any questions or discussion?
Is this good enough?
Oh, yes.
Is it?
Well, let, let me back up and say this. It's as good as I believe that we can get. Uh, as I've told anybody, well, what do you do? You know, can you have a hundred percent way to know that we're never gonna get hit again? There's always a bigger fish in the sea. So somebody always a little bit better. So I, I feel comfortable with this, with what we got in place and, and the actions that you guys have taken, uh, a couple of months ago, move forward, server virtualization. I believe this is good as we can do. So.
And what's the date on the server virtualization?
We're waiting on Comcast to install our one gig fiber link between here and the police department. So we're kind of waiting. I'm hoping within a month. We're looking at that. So we're excited about it.
Does this, do we have a recurring monthly cost or a previous?
Didn't, well, it was not a monthly cost. It's a yearly cost within.
Just, I get, I'm assuming this will not be a better product, but.
Oh, yeah, quite a bit. Well, uh, I mean, just to answer your question, we're, we were looking at probably around fourteen hundred dollars a year, fourteen hundred dollars a month.
The downside's not an option.
Oh, yeah. That's too much.
Any other questions? Or have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the fourteen hundred twenty-three seventy-four recurring expenses and the installation.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries four over.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is item D, streets. Uh, number one, report quotes on Ingram Avenue resurfacing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Ingram Avenue has been targeted as one of the streets in, uh, disrepair that does need to be resurfaced. We have solicited quotes. Uh, we only had two companies, uh, come back to us with a number on that. Uh, one is from Allied Paving Contractors. Their quote is sixty-two thousand, three hundred thirty dollars. The other's from Jasper Grading, uh, Pipeline. Their quote was forty-two thousand, nine sixty, forty cents. It's my recommendation that we, uh, approve the quote from Jasper Grading for forty-two thousand, nine sixty, forty is the low bid on this project.
This is in front of the Ingram.
It's in front of the funeral home.
Funeral home. It costs that much to do that little road?
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, you gotta consider the width of the road. It's, it's, it's pretty wide, all the way through.
Three lanes wide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this S-Plus seven?
This is, this is a S-Plus seven expense, uh, so it's no, no impact on the, uh, operating budget.
And does this include the restraping at Pilgrim Mill?
Yes. They'll restripe from, uh, Ingram Avenue up to Pilgrim Mill.
When you get out Ingram Avenue and hit Pilgrim Mill, the strapping's virtually gone from there all the way.
You're right.
Uh, all the way up to the Sinclair Station. So.
Yeah, that one, Hugh Muller.
Hugh's doing really good. Uh, he's a little cranky. I just, I say just a little, uh, but, uh, he, he's doing great. His back, he's in, he's doing physical therapy. Uh, he, as a result of his back problem, he also found out he had a little heart issue, uh, and they're taking care of that while he's out also. He is at home. And if you want to call him or go by and see him, he'd love to talk to you. But, but no, he's doing, he's doing really good.
I saw him when he was doing physical therapy. He didn't look too happy.
No, he's not real happy about that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid of Jasper Grading Pipeline.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries four over. Next is item two, emergency repair on the rock wall at, uh, Wells Fargo Bank across from the jail.
We, uh, if you drove through town the last little while, you, you seen all the rock that had fell off that wall. Uh, we don't know what caused it. We're thinking somebody had to, had to hit it, but, uh, there's no reports, no witnesses. We don't know. Nobody knows for fact what, what, who hit the wall or, or what. But, uh, it did cause significant damage on the wall there on the side, and you can see the results of it on the sidewalk. Stonework Unlimited is somebody we have used for several years to do maintenance on our stone walls. And, uh, this being what we deem as an emergency situation to get this, uh, fixed and reinforced as quickly as possible for public safety reasons. Uh, we got a quote from them for eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars. And that's for fixing the wall and removing all the debris, uh, also. So, uh, we'd like to get your, uh, approval to go forward with that. He can start tomorrow on this if it, if this gets approved.
That wall's come from, sorry.
We, we built that wall.
I mean, it's clearly in the right-of-way. It's, I guess, has utility carrying purposes. It's retained dirt.
We, it was built, I think, probably in the mid nineties. Uh, we've had some little stuff along the way, just in isolated areas that had to be fixed. But, uh.
You have no idea who hit it.
Nothing of this significance. And, no, we don't have any reports of anybody hitting it. I mean, it, somebody probably trying to turn around right there in the road, a big truck, maybe. Uh, we just don't know.
And the way the wall was constructed, you've got a poured concrete wall. Then you got a gap, then you got a stone wall. Well, the stone wall's basically just a freestanding wall. It's not tied to the concrete wall like it should have been. Had it been tied to it, somebody to hit it, you might have knocked a couple of stones out. Instead, it just knocked the wall over. The wall just fell. So that's when he's repairing it, he's gonna be tying it to the, so somebody hits that section of wall again.
Yeah.
The damage would be much less.
More to their car than the wall.
Yeah, it's just a, it's standing up. It can go this way if it gets hit, to where if it's cemented and solid and tied in with ties, then it's not gonna go anywhere. You might knock a few rocks out, but you're not gonna knock out that whole wall.
Is he just repairing that section?
Yeah, he's just repairing that section that's been affected by this incident. Yeah, he, he's gonna use as many of the rocks that's on the ground as possible to tie it back in. Uh, he may have to use some more. But he's, he's done all the work around on the wall that we've had done, so he should have the material to kind of make it look like it never happened.
Said he's gonna, he's gotta use new rock. They'll just be sporadic, spaced in so that, you know, just have this one section.
Cleaned it up already, is we know he's gonna use what's there if he can.
Pressure loss, what we have, the existing wall, we're trying to make it all look, which we're gonna stand out.
Any other questions or discussion? Have a motion to approve? Please vote. Motion carries four over. Next is item A, fairgrounds. And it's my apologies, it's not in your packet, but for trying to get it put to bed so that the guy can get going. The company is, let me find here, Square Ice, Inc. They do ice skating rinks. The port, you know, set them up. They're there for a couple of months. So the thought, what we'd like to do is put ice skating rink down at the fairgrounds. It'd be over near Castleberry Roads, it's visible from the street. But, um, but it would be open basically from Thanksgiving till when the kids go back to school in.
January.
In, uh, January. Uh, this guy's been doing, he's had this skating rink, uh, in Blue Ridge. Uh, and then he's also had it for the past three years at City of Marietta. He is a City of Coming resident inside the city limits. He'd like to do it over here. Um, and I think it would be a good thing for us. Uh, basically, the agreement, we would be responsible for renting the tent that covers it, 'cause you don't need sunshine hitting it. It's not gonna be below freezing every day. Uh, and the power that the machine uses, you know, to keep the ice. The estimated cost on that's about twenty thousand dollars. Um, we'll be able to sell advertising all the way around the rink and on the out, on the inside and the outside of the rink, which would cover our expenses for having the rink there. Um, as I've talked to several different companies on this, there's a very high break-even point for them to set up, staff it, all that, uh, and not knowing how the fairgrounds is gonna be. 'Cause you're, you're not going to Avaline where you're going for dinner and, oh, let's go ice skating, you know? So he's kind of taking a pretty big risk, um, to do it. But that's, that's basically, our cost would be roughly twenty thousand to have it. I think we can sell the advertising to recoup our cost.
When's it open? When's the, what's the hours that it's open? Saturday, Sunday?
No, it's during the seven days a week.
Really?
Yeah. Yep. And then we're gonna have three, two to three big events there in December that'll help draw, draw people to it, too.
So he'll have it staffed?
Yeah. And all, all that's on him.
He is taking a big chance there.
Right. I, I mean, he told me it's sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars is his break-even. He's gotta bring that much in.
I mean, how much is it to go?
Is that, that was in there? Yeah, that was number sticking out in my head.
Does he set up any concessions or anything like that?
And that's the other thing. If we set up, and that'd be on us, that we could set up a concession stand, any of that would go.
Does he not want to?
That revenue would come to us.
He doesn't want to do concessions.
So that's something that we can either, we can do it, or we can have, uh, you know, if we wanted to talk to nonprofits to let them do it or something.
He wouldn't be mad at us. Am I doing hot chocolate or?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So.
Yeah, you can sell something.
And this is something that, if it does go well for him, but down the road, then we would work out, you know, next year or, you know, when we're. The perfect place for this would be in the new city center, you know? And when we get to that point, then we'd be getting a percentage of the revenues. But being the first year and it's such a big risk, I think it's a break-even for us. And it's kind of, just trying to get him away from. 'Cause he can go set it back up again in Marietta. He'd rather be here. I'd rather have a skating rink there than not having one.
Shoot, yeah. He can get enough, I hope he doesn't lose any money.
He's the one taking that risk, you know, so.
Okay, so what do we need?
Just need a motion to, for me to execute the agreement. I think, Kevin, we've got a couple of little tweaks, but it's a little minor. Nothing substantive. Yes. No. It is, it's gotta be a hurricane-rated, and it's a free-span intent that's gonna be, it's gotta span like sixty feet, about like a hundred feet. It's a. Yeah. Now, he'll handle negotiating it, you know, with his vendor and all that. We'll just have to, to cut a check. So I guess do we need to have that in here as well that?
That we pay.
Approving that we're paying the.
I think that's part of the contract.
Yeah, so.
You, you give them the terms of the contract. You, you give them the council all the material terms of the contract.
So we need a motion to offer as mayor to.
Execute contract.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to offer as mayor to execute contract?
Uh, second.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four over. And then we'll just get Kevin, if you'll just make, I kind of saw where you had your notes. If you'll make whatever tweaks and then that you're happy with, then I'll sign it and send it.
Okay.
Send it over to him. Uh, next announcements, upcoming playhouse shows, Smoke on the Mountain, September sixth through the thirtieth. Thursdays through Saturdays at eight, Sundays at three. And we have Fridays at the Fairgrounds, September twenty-first, from five to ten. And since Louis is here, I think we're gonna skip exec, since he's not here, we'll skip executive session.
Okay.
On that. So, have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, please vote. Motion carries four over. Thank you.